We have to go back and pick up an item under City Council that was pulled from our consent calendar, and that is Item C under the Consent Calendar, which is Guidelines for Community Support, I'm sorry, Guidelines for City Support of Community Events. Mr. Norman's going to take it?
Thank you very much. On June 24th, the City Council requested that staff provide a recommendation on handling cultural arts funding to community groups through the formation of a formal process. And on November 16th, 2016, a study session was held to kick off that idea. On January 13th and January 31st, the city's policy committee met to discuss and draft a policy and make recommendation to forward the policy, which is entitled Guidelines for City Support of Community Events, to the City Council for adoption. This is before you tonight. And what I'd like to point out is what is being recommended in terms of community events funding. First of all, we're recommending the implementation of an application process, and this is new. And like cultural services funding, an application would be submitted by each of the event organizations that would be requesting funding. And that would be due by April 1st of each year. That application would in fact be a public record, and people could review those applications. The applications would then be made part of the budget information that City Council reviews as part of the annual budget review prior to budget adoption. And then if adopted by council for this funding, then after budget adoption, the city manager will execute a funding agreement with each of these agencies with, that details the responsibilities of the recipient in spending the money in accordance with their application. This also is a public document. We think we've taken a traditional funding process, which actually has worked well over the years. But actually, we've now provided some additional transparency and accountability for the use of those funds, and we think that's a move in the right direction.
Okay. Anything else from staff on this? Janie, you have anything to add? Okay. Okay. Mr. Trimbley, you were the one that asked this be pulled. Do you want to start?
Sure.
C. Yes, I'm sorry. You weren't in the room, were you? Yes, this is the item you pulled from Consent Calendar.
Thanks. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm just catching up. All right. I do have some comments on this. And first of all, I am sincerely very appreciative of the work that the policy committee has done. Very respectful of that work. Right off the top, I want to make it clear that nonprofit organizations are vital to the health of our city and vital to the health of our residents. And I know that we are all involved in nonprofits, and that can only be a good thing. The cultural and the entertainment events that are the focus of this policy are great events. Now, that said, I have a concern that I want to discuss. And I may well be in a minority here, but I want to raise the issue. We as council members are in a position to decide on providing city support to various nonprofits in accordance with this proposed policy. And although there may not be a legal conflict of interest, I think from an appearance standpoint, we need to be careful that we don't create a perception that nonprofit organizations are receiving city support because council members have leadership positions in those organizations. So with that in mind, my suggestion is that the draft policy be amended to raise the bar so that doesn't present an issue. I really want to emphasize again that I'm very thankful of the efforts made by our community-based nonprofits. And my comments are not directed at any nonprofits or at any individual, period. I have another thought. I know that there has been a concern raised, and I'm going to come back to this issue in a minute, but let me just deal with one other while I'm working. I think a question's been raised regarding, well, gee, when the city provides money to nonprofits, is that a gift of public funds? And my understanding of the law, and I'm going to ask Mr. Pirik to confirm for me, my understanding of the law is if the council approves the expenditure, and if it's for a public purpose, it's not a gift of public funds. No findings are necessary. Is that a correct understanding, Mr. Pirik?
That's correct.
So in my experience professionally, you know, a legislative determination by the council of that type is typically not prone to a successful court challenge. So I'm not focused on the gift of public funds. But to go back to the original issue, I want to make a motion at the appropriate time, Madam Mayor. And I'll defer to the timing on this. But I would adopt, I would support adopting the policy as presented with an addition to Section C, which would add Section C 5 for ineligible organizations as follows, quote, Camarillo-based nonprofit 501(c)(3) organizations in which a member of the City Council is a director or officer. And that would be my suggested addition. And I think we as individual council members could certainly still be involved as volunteers and attendees and members of a nonprofit, just not in the leadership positions.
You went faster than I can write. Could you repeat? I'm sorry.
I have a bad habit of doing that. What, yeah, let me just.
I'm a slow writer.
What I would propose is that we add a sentence to Section C, and it would be number five. And it would be as follows. Camarillo-based nonprofit 501(c)(3) organizations.
Hang on, Tony. Nonprofit. Now, what was the other one? I'm sorry.
Camarillo-based nonprofit 501(c)(3) organizations. I'm modeling the language in number one, by the way, or I'm sorry, in B1 up above. Okay. Camarillo-based nonprofit 501(c)(3) organizations in which a member of the City Council is a director or officer. That's my suggestion and will be in the form of a motion at the appropriate time. And since it's a 501(c)(3) organization, it would be a nonprofit, more than likely a nonprofit public benefit corporation under California law, or mutual, no, probably a public benefit corporation under California law. And therefore, there would be a board of directors for that organization, and then the board of directors would elect their officers.
Don't you mean a member of the board or officers? Because a lot of organizations in town sell $15 memberships to everybody they can rope in.
No, Ms. Craven, you're right. And I meant director very specifically, either a director or officer.
Well, you said a member or officer.
No, I said in which a member of the City Council is a director or.
Oh, director. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. It's because I went too fast. Sorry. Let me just repeat it one more time. Camarillo-based nonprofit 501(c)(3) organizations in which a member of the City Council is a director or officer. And again, I want to repeat, I want to emphasize, I am very thankful for the wonderful things that our community nonprofits do, and we're all involved in it. And my comments aren't directed at anybody in particular. It's just, this is a view that I've taken, and I want to share it with the council and discuss it. And I think this is the appropriate time, given this introduction of this draft policy, which I will reflect on is an indication of what we believe, anyone, any three of us believe at any one time is an appropriate policy for, to govern the city.
When you say director, you mean officers are board members?
That's what a director.
A member of the board, here's what I intend, Mr. Morgan. It would be anyone who is a director or a member of the Board of Directors. Those two terms are synonymous. Or an officer of that organization. And typically, the board of directors will select their officers, like the chair and the vice chair and the treasurer and the secretary, et cetera.
May I ask you a question? You're basing this on your own personal opinion, then, is what you're.
Yes, I.
It's not based on law or anything?
No, it's not based on law. I'm basing it on the, you're absolutely right, Madam Mayor. I'm basing it not on the fact that I believe there's a legal conflict of interest. There may well not be any kind of legal conflict of interest. But I'm concerned about the appearance.
I have a question, Tony.
Sure.
Can that individual still be in that organization? In other words, like you take, like an organization, let's say that organization has members, but then they also have executive board, or like the Lions Club, for instance. Let's just take that. Okay, you have, now, notwithstanding you pay dues and everything, but they have regular members, but they also have like an executive board that basically makes all the decision.
Right.
And the members can still be a member of that organization?
My intention, my intention is that this amendment in no way impacts being a member of an organization. So for example, or a volunteer. You could be a member, we could all be members or volunteers. I don't know how the Lions Club is constituted. I don't know, for example, Mr. Kildie, whether it's a 501(c)(3), but be that as it may.
You know, Mike, if it.
It is a 501(c)(3).
I think it is. I think it is.
All right. So feel free to be a member. I'm just talking about being on the, in a leadership position on the board of directors of that entity, or an officer of that entity, because of my previously stated concern about being in a leadership position.
Let me just, if I might, I have just one more question here. What about those organizations that don't have a lot of members? I mean, they're very, very small. I mean, there's some volunteer organizations that have, you know, maybe 10 to 20 people, but of that, maybe they got five active people that go to the meetings. What is your thought on that?
I haven't developed a thought on that because, well, really, practically speaking, that's probably a hypothetical, because the organizations that I think would be impacted by this policy are established organizations which have nonprofit corporation status under California law and a federal tax exemption under 501(c)(3), and not an unincorporated association of a group of 10 or 15 people just starting out, which, by the way, I fully support. I think that's great. But I think this policy really speaks to the larger type organization, or the more established type organization.
I think your question is, would it apply to a smaller board? Under state law, you can incorporate as a 501(c)(3) with basically two officers and two members of the board. You need a president and you need a secretary. So you don't necessarily have 50 people on a board, you know, as you could in some, or 20 or whatever. So it could be hypothetically, you could have a situation where you wouldn't have anybody other than your officers or your board of directors. Well, thank you, Mr. Kildie, or Mr. Trimbley, for your opinion. And I'm going to have to speak up, because obviously, I'm probably the person you're after with all of this.
I'm not after you.
I have served as the president of the Camerio Arts Council for almost 20 years now, and the concerts in the park or something that the city funds. I have always looked at this as certainly not anything that I have done for my own personal benefit. I have not done it, as some people might accuse, oh, you're doing it for political purposes. I will tell you that if I was going to do something for political purposes, I would not have spent nine weekends out of every summer of my life for the 20, last past 20 years, out there in that park to help put on the concerts in the park. So if anyone thinks that that's why I'm doing it, boy, you know, you're mistaken, because it's been a big part of my life. I will also disagree with the fact that you think that we have undue influence. Every one of us comes to this council with ideas, with concepts, no matter what we're talking about, and you make decisions based on those. We have five people sitting here that approve the budget. We have a community that receives the benefit, and it really doesn't matter if this person is sitting on the City Council or not sitting on the council. You fund it based on what is happening, what is occurring. And the concerts in the park have become a community tradition in this, in this community that thousands and thousands of people every summer attend it. And to say that you don't think that one person sitting on the, on the City Council, being involved in that, brings undue influence, it has nothing to do with me personally. It has to do with the fact that the City Council has always found the benefit of providing that service to the community. What has my participation on the Arts Council done? It's brought stability. It's brought an organization that really, in my eyes, serves a purpose for the city. You go in the park, and I will bet you on any given night, 50, at least 50% of the people thinks the City of Camarillo put on those events. And the City of Camarillo is obviously one of the largest sponsors. We use the event, we work very closely with city staff. And having that relationship to put on a good event for the city actually has been a plus, because we, the Arts Council is always thinking of the city and not just the Arts Council and that event. I will tell you that personally, me, I think as an elected official, I am held to a greater standard of accountability. I personally make sure that every tax return is filed, every filing with the Secretary of State, that internal controls are in place to ensure that our funds are guarded. We take great care in making sure that the city property that we use is done so in a good and respectful manner. We work well with all of our city departments. Having that contact, having that ability to do that has been a benefit. It hasn't been a negative. And this is something, as I said, that's been going on for 20 years. We've had something happen in the community. It's kind of raised some of this talk to the level because of the fear of losing city funds. I think this new policy gives us that opportunity to really hold accountability to any, and it's not just the organization, it's the event that is going on. I'll take the Fourth of July. We are a great participant with the Fourth of July. The Lions Club is the primary 501(c)(3) that puts it on, but it really is in partnership with the city. Many years ago, we took the funding for special events out of the regular community service grant process, because they were events that happened every year. And every year, we fund the Fourth of July, the Christmas Parade, the concerts in the park, the Fiesta, probably a couple more. And we made it a line item in the budget, because it is something that this community had come to expect the City Council to fund and expect to be able to attend every year. It didn't matter whether one of us was sitting on that board. And if you go around and you look at other communities within the city, or the county, within the state, within the, throughout the country, council members serve on board of directors, and council members take leadership roles. I can name some within the county of Ventura that also serve on it. So I think to say that because one council member takes a role is perceived to be improper, I think is just, I guess, hopefully, if nothing else, I've proven it over 20 years, it actually can be a benefit for the city. So I respectfully disagree with your position. I think that, to me, council members, I said, is held to a greater responsibility, a greater level of accountability. And for that reason, we should be grateful that council members step up to participate. You're an officer in Camarillo Hospice. Do you plan on stepping down? Or do you, do you not want us to fund or help and participate with the, with the items that go with, that Camarillo Hospice does in this community? Great things. Tree of Life, for instance. Not voting on it tonight was perfect. You didn't vote on it, but it doesn't mean it can't happen. And to say that we would want you to leave and not be a part of that, to me, would be wrong, because you bring an asset both here and you bring an asset both there. But the council as a whole is who makes the decisions on what to fund, not one person. And I will tell you that I am, I have a lot of no votes up here, that I'm the only one. So me sitting here doesn't guarantee you're all going to approve something that I want, because that doesn't happen on a, on a regular basis. So I think because there's five of us, I think to single out and say you can't participate because you're a council member, I think you're taking a right away from the individual. And I think you're actually hurting the city, because there are people who can give. Now, does there need to be things in place to make sure we don't have what happened with the Fiesta? Absolutely. And that, by the way, didn't happen with a council member as an officer. It happened with an individual member of the city, of the regular public as the officers. So it certainly wasn't Mr. Morgan being on the City Council that caused that to happen. So I respectfully disagree. I know I've gone on and on, but I think I, after 20 years of serving in that role, I guess I deserve the right to say my piece.
May I respond, Madam Mayor?
Let me, the rest of the council has something to say, if they'd like to.
Mr. Morgan?
Well, I'm right in the middle of this, too. Because somebody here comes coming, talking about the Fiesta every night, even though we haven't taken money from the city in three years. And we also have different board members. We have things that can, that makes us sure. You haven't seen our meetings. You don't know what we've done to correct things. I've been, years ago, when we had the Fiesta and we made it what it is today, we had rules and regulations. I decided then and there to stop being president. I don't think we should, I don't think board members should stop, but presidentating the thing, that was my own opinion. And I stepped down. The only time I've ever come back is when I had to help correct a problem.
Correct all the problems.
Yeah. And I had to come back and correct the problem.
More than once.
Because nobody else wanted to do it. Anyway, that, and with the Fiesta, same thing with the Arts Council, which I helped start. I was the founder back in 1981, 80, I'm sorry, 83. And after one year, I said others should be president, not me, because I'm a council member. But remaining on the board also is like being on the Camarillo Ranch House. We don't get to vote, but we're on the board as liaisons.
It's not the same. The city sends us to be represented.
No, I understand, Charlotte. I'm saying similar. We're, we.
You're the member of the board and you vote.
We go there and we're members of the board. I think that a member of the board's okay, but I don't think we should be in the, not just me, be in a leadership position, because you're the one that speaks for that board. And.
I disagree. The board speaks for.
Well, I know, I understand. I didn't say anything when you were saying anything. Just letting you know that you could still be, I think, I can go along with it, if they're part of the directors, I mean, part of the board members, not officers. Board members and that's it. Go ahead.
I've been thinking while the rest of you are talking, and thank you for letting me have a long time to think. Excuse me. What I've been thinking is that this is not for any old thing. This is not for the types of things that we looked at in the, what do you call it, community service grants. This is for big events, special things that are special for the community. Many of the things that, as we develop this policy, many of the things we're talking about are things that cities generally put on. But our city doesn't. We fund them quite a bit, but we don't put them on. The reason we don't put them on is because we don't, we're not a full-service city. We're a contract city. And the department in the city that often puts on parades, Fourth of July concerts, is a park department. Our Recreation and Park District does other things, and I'm not in any way saying they, you know, I'm not trying to get into their business. This is stuff that the city has wanted to do. We give them money for the parade. That's one of the things that's, that we were talking about being included here. So it would be the, just a few things. I don't know that there would be new things added every year. It would have, so I'm kind of torn. For a long time, I thought, you know, we shouldn't be funding things we're part of. And yet, as I've sat and watched, I haven't seen a whole lot of people coming up, stepping up and wanting to take over huge. That's the problem. Huge efforts. I was involved with the Christmas Parade for eight years. And part of those eight years, I was on the City Council. And I was a big part of the Christmas Parade. And I finally got out off of that, got on to other things. I was involved with Fiesta for 12 years. And then Mr. Morgan decided he wanted to make it bigger, and I got out because I didn't want to be involved with that much effort. There are a lot of people who don't want to take on that, that amount of work, or who want to get into other things. And so I think that by saying, we as a city, saying they cannot vote on the money for this was one thing. And we can pass that rule. It may not be against state law, but we can say we, that if you're involved in that organization on, as a member of the Board of Directors, or as an officer, or whatever rules we want, we can say we, we're not going to allow you to vote on that. But then to say that you're not at a level where you're doing the lion's share of the work, therefore, we're not going to let this effort be funded, I would see that the consequences would be that we wouldn't have concerts in the park, and we wouldn't have the Fiesta, and I think they'd come to a halt pretty quickly. I guarantee you, the contracts. Okay, I'm talking now. And so for that reason, I'm not going to support this if the motion is made. And it's simply because I think these events are really good for the city. But if you want to talk, not having each person vote on something where we're involved in, I could go with that. Vote on funding for it, I mean.
Yeah, I've been, and I appreciate you bringing this up. I've been thinking about this for a number of years here, and what would I do? And I've always tried to be careful that we don't get a majority of council members on a lot of organizations. And I've always tried to be very careful about that, too. However, when you look at what's happened here, and the hours and hours that are put in to these events that we do, it seems to me that we're kind of throwing the baby out with the bathwater here a little bit. And perhaps we need to look at a way that we could fund these organizations, which are really, really popular, they're important, there's people that like them. And, you know, council members as individual, and I look at it as just individual citizens more than council members on these boards, that want to volunteer in the community, like most of our residents do. We've got, I think, the highest amount of volunteers of any city, I think, in the county here. But it's always the perception, you know, what is the public's perception that's out there? And I think we need to acknowledge that. I think that it does need to be acknowledged there. But to go and say that, and it might just, we're talking about a city council member specifically, or can't be in the managerial part of this, I think is going a little bit too far for my liking here tonight. We had an issue here. It was a very unfortunate issue. We've all had a lot of discussions about it. To a certain extent, you know, it was addressed. Could it happen again? Of course. I've been in a lot of nonprofits that, you know, we're all volunteers, you know? We're not accountants, we're not lawyers, we're not a lot of things. But some things just, you know, with organizations happen, and they shouldn't happen. And I think if you put the necessary guidelines in to make sure that this won't happen again, I think that would be more of what we could perhaps do with this policy here. Because I'm telling you, I can't speak for anybody else. I don't want to go through it again. I mean, I, you know, been dealing with this for quite a long time. So, and it's not just that. I don't mean to single anybody out. It's just, you know, we talk about these organizations that we give money to all the time, and whether or not they spend the amount of money that's been appropriated every year. And we try to figure that out, but do we really know unless one of us is on the board of directors, do they really spend the amount of money that's been appropriated here? So I appreciate this discussion. I think it's, I think it's. I think it's, I think it's long overdue, quite frankly. And I think it's, you know, it can be uncomfortable, but it's something that it's necessary here. Perhaps we need to look at something a little further, but I think to say that, you know, they can't serve, I think is a bit premature, in my opinion, right now. So whether or not the voting member on that, we can certainly discuss that. But I have to say, the organizations by far and away that we support do a great job for a lot of, and I know Mr. Tremblay is absolutely on board with that, too, has nothing to do with that at all. But, you know, there was an issue. I think it's, it's an attempt to try to address the issue here, and I think it'd be in all of our best interests to do that to the best of our abilities. But I think to go so far as to say that they can't be on the executive part of it, I think is a little bit too far now. And I am willing to look into another, you know, idea with this, of course. I think we all have to be. These are policies that can always be amended when some new information comes forward. So I don't mean to be long-winded, but I think that if it's a discussion, I think that, I appreciate the individual bringing it up here. I know it's not the most comfortable thing that we do here, but I think it's something that, you know, probably needed, and I know we needed to have a discussion about this, and to be, you know, as open about this as I can. And again, I've thought about this for a long time, but I know that there's individuals that do a lot of the heavy lifting on this, so.
Thank you. I think one thing to remember when we're talking about here, we're talking about funding for specific events. So we're not talking about funding organizations. Therefore, specific events. Mr. Morgan?
You're giving an example of what wouldn't have happened, okay? One, if a councilman hadn't come forward and set up the Arts Council, or if it hadn't expanded the Fiesta, which was at 15 booths when I got there, which is almost dead, the council was threatening to quit giving money to it.
The council did not give money to it at that time.
They did too. I guarantee you, they gave some, maybe it was for your term there, but they gave some money. Anyway, also, the other thing was the car show, car show on the boulevard. I was there with Tom Maloney when they first set it up. I said, "Tom, you go be the leader and you get, and we'll push it." The car show was a very, very good event, and still is. They changed the days, unfortunately. They're going to change them back, they got to. But those things couldn't have happened without, someone had a little energy and wanted to form it and get it going and keep it going. This wouldn't have happened without a council members that would do that kind of thing, had the commitment.
And I'll go to the concert. You might have started it, but for 20 years, it's been growing.
It's still going because of what we did.
Yep.
You know, I put it together. I built that thing out there, almost no taxpayers' dollars. Okay? So anyway, if we hadn't been involved, we would not have, had done this.
All right, Mr. Tremblay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am aware that this is a sensitive issue, and I am certainly not after anyone. I think, I said at the very beginning, I think I said, that I may well be in a minority here. I think having this kind of respectful public conversation is healthy, and I appreciate having this conversation with my colleagues. I approach this in a very humble and respectful manner. I'm not after anyone. I do think, a couple of points, never would I think, and never would I assert some sort of undue influence. I'm talking here about an appearance issue. I'm not arguing the value of an event to the community. They're wonderful events that we're talking about here that have been mentioned, and wonderful nonprofits that have done this. And I'll stipulate all the time about the benefits to the community. There's no, I'm not talking about taking any kind of improper role. And in fact, I, as I said, my suggestion was with respect to continuing to be a member, continuing to be a volunteer. It was focused on leadership positions. And you're right, Madam Mayor, I did recuse myself this evening. I am a board member and an officer for Camrio Hospice, and proud to serve on that organization, which does so much good for the community. And I appreciate that very much. And I'm not about taking rights away from anyone. I do think the Camrio Ranch House matter is distinguishable, because that's a, I think we appoint an ex officio.
The city sends us off.
Two ex officios.
The city sends us off, thank you.
The city sends us off to do that, so it isn't like we're doing something else.
Anyway, I'm, those are the comments that I would make, and.
Well, I will go back to hearing what's been said, and I can, I suppose I can understand what you're saying. But I think that Camrio is a community that is a, it's a close-knit community that thrives as a community. You can always find the naysayers, you can always find the people who want to complain, and rarely do you see those people come forward to work. And sometimes, and I'm going to go back to the Arts Council, it's a very small group of people who put in so many hours that we go out and we look for volunteers, and we get volunteers until they find out how hard you work and that you're out there nine weekends out of your summer, and pretty soon, you know, we don't have those volunteers anymore. So maybe we, out there, we have created a situation that, you know, maybe someday the city's got to take it over because it's become so big. But it is something that is a signature event for this community. And remember, what we're talking about here is not funding the Camrio Arts Council for whatever it wants to do. The line item in the budget says concerts in the park, and that specifically is what it's for. I think the accountability is great. I personally have no problem with that. I would actually have no problems making the stipulation that we don't vote on it. Maybe the other thing we need to do to, I think it was Mr. Kildy said it, maybe we need to have only one member per organization, so that there isn't the perception that two members would be voting. That way, there'd always be four that aren't on the organization, might be the good compromise. The Lions, I know we have two Lions members here. I don't know if you serve in what organization.
Members, that's all.
Well, I don't think he was talking about members, because, I mean, we all could.
No, I said.
Join the Pleasant Valley Historical Society.
If I said I don't think they're members. I think on hospice, you're the only one, so you would obviously would be the only one. And then if you didn't vote, there'd still be four people who would vote, so that might be the good compromise, that you always had to recuse yourself from the approval of the funds. And that way, because it isn't against the law, the district attorney came out and said that Mr. Morgan had no conflict of interest with the Fiesta. Our city attorney has told us this many, many times. We have asked to ensure that we were following the law. We've always announced it when we serve on a board, that I'm a member of this board, and so that people know it, and so we haven't been doing anything that people don't know about. So I, you know, those would be my two suggestions and compromises that I would be willing to do. I will tell you.
I will. I will tell you that, and I didn't mean to interrupt you before, but if you're talking about the concerts in the park, if you're going to adopt this, I will guarantee you that unless someone walks through that door right now, you won't have a concert season. Because the contracts are sitting on my desk, and I haven't signed them yet. So if you're going to tell me that I can't serve in that role, it isn't going to happen unless somebody else wants to come forward and take it on. So I don't mean to be threatening, it's just that you can't suddenly do that and expect it to happen. So we'd have to, at least if, I wasn't hearing three who approve, who were for it anyway, but if you were to do it, I just have to make you aware that you'd have to find somebody real quick to take that over, because it, it just, you know, if I couldn't do it, it wouldn't happen under my watch this year. So with that, I do have one speaker sheet. Mr. Lormer, again.
Well, you know, we're at this position, obviously, because of the Fiesta Association. You know, I've talked to these charities when I ran for city council. They're good organizations. They have nothing bad. I know some of you, I think all of you mean well. I think you really do want to do the good thing. It's the appearance, and each of you talk as it's your personal thing, and I get it. And I, you know something, I, I get that. The problem is, there needs to be a thing, I think there should be a community board that basically decides who the funding should go, and you guys shouldn't pick them. And then you shouldn't do the financial part. I don't have, I don't think there's a problem with you sitting on a board, making decisions on how to do that. I have no problem with that. I think the financial. If you have board members that say, "Jan, I need you to pitch the deal to the city council during the breaks," or whatever, I think there should be rules saying that you can't pitch for any money, and I'm not saying you do that. I'm just pointing that out.
Don't do that.
I'm just, what I'm saying, though, is, what I'm saying, the financial parts, okay? I don't see a problem serving on the board, but anytime you talk about money, getting money from the city, you should be recused. And when they talk about that in that board meeting, you should step out like you do here. That would be fair. So, you know, I know some of these organizations, I've talked to them. I think they're, they need your help, and I get it. You're in a leadership role, and they need, they need some people to stand up, and so, you know, I know I come here with a lot of crazy, I have my ideas, and sometimes you don't agree, you think I'm crazy, but I don't have a problem with you serving on the board. I have a problem with you in any capacity during the meeting where they talk financials, getting money from the city, or lobbying money, or having family members on there. I don't think you should have a family member lobby money. I don't think a city council person should lobby money, or you should vote on it. That's my only problem. If you want to be there and be the person that organized it, that's not the issue. I think the issue is money. You pay to play, meaning that you put a family member or yourself, and you go pitch it at any given time after work, or you go do stuff, anything like that should be clearly in words. You cannot pitch it, your family members can't pitch it, and that would relegate the problem. But you sitting on the board, I don't see a problem with that, as long as you don't talk any financials, or none of your family members, or any friends, coworkers, come and pitch it to anybody on city property, or anybody behind, that, if you do that part, I don't see a problem. You know, the concerts are great. Jan, I got to tell you, they're great. I have no problem with you doing that. I just, it's the financial appearance. And if anybody is doing an embezzlement or stuff like that, then you have to step forward as a person on there. You have to come to this meeting and say, "We have a financial problem." If you're going to be involved with that, and you say, "Hey, I'm going to do that," then you should come forward. There should be a stipulation that we've had a problem, and you're going to come forward. Other than that, I think that's fair, okay? So I hope you'll consider what I said tonight, and I think it's reasonable.
Thank you very much. I want to clarify something, since we're doing all this in public, and I suppose this is a good thing, because it's been brewing out there for a while now. I will tell you, I have never, ever, and I will never have and never will, do I violate the Brown Act. Never have I, in the hallways, asked any of you to finance any of my projects and that.
None of us have.
So I never have, and I never will, and I'm not going to send my family members down here to do the same. I will guarantee you that, and I don't know, I don't know of anyone who has. So please, public, I want you to know that, and Matt, I want you to know that. I personally have no problem not voting on it. I think that's fine. If that's what we need, I think we need to be clear and honest about it, what we serve on, what we do, what role we take. This policy will do that. One of the things that we ask for is a list of board members. You're going to be able to see who's on the board. You ask for financials. You ask for nonprofit status. I guess I should read it, because some people at home don't know what we're talking about. It discusses the eligible events. We have to be a Camrio-based nonprofit 501(c) organization with the status verified annually to make sure no one has lost their nonprofit status. Or you're going to be a governmental agency with primary offices in Camrio that provides services that directly serve or benefit Camrio residents. Ineligible organizations are funding for-profit organizations, nonprofit organizations and governmental agencies without primary offices in Camrio. Also ineligible is monetary support for pass-through fundraising events, however, in-kind services may be provided. And that would usually be streets, closures, et cetera, police services. And also ineligible is ongoing operation salaries or benefits. Let me see, pardon, let me read the eligible events. The city council in its discretion, the city's council in its discretion, may provide funding or in-kind services for community, culture, and entertainment events that benefit the residents of Camrio. These events must be open to the public and provided free of charge or at a nominal fee. And I will tell you why the word nominal fee in there is, I believe, the Fourth of July, they have a very small gate, they charge.
Seven dollars.
Two dollars.
Two dollars.
So that, I think one of the questions that came in in an email, what does nominal mean? It's not written in there, but that is, the intent is, the nominal is, you know, let's say, under $10. I mean, very nominal. We're not talking, I know that's all in the eyes of the beholder. Have I gone all over the important parts? The application, there will be an application process. In that application, as the city manager said, it's due by April the first of each year. The request must be submitted on a form provided by the city, along with requested attachments. The application must include program description, including dates and location, dollar amount requested, in-kind services requested, purpose, proposed use of city funds or services, estimated number of Camrio residents served. For a for-profit organization, it has to include the latest IRS determination letter of 501(c)(3) status, a list of the board of directors, a budget for the event, the organization's total annual budget, the organization's most recent annual financial statements, and then a report on prior-year event for which the city's funding or services were expended. Then for government agencies, they're only asking for a budget for the event, and then a report on the prior year's services. And then there also will be an agreement that will be executed by the city manager following city council approval of budget allocations for the events. And then also, under reporting and accountability, in addition to the items listed above, city staff may ask for additional information or verification that the organization or agency is in compliance with state and federal regulations. And that's basically telling the organizations that if you apply, you submit all this, the city account, or the city manager has the right to ask for any further information in order to satisfy any need. Did I cover all the important parts? Pretty close. But the public sits at home, and they've heard this whole debate, and they don't quite know what it is we're debating about. So I thought that was important, that we do it.
Your Honor, as you see, there's, to put on a major event, there is a lot of work, a lot of work. We have 20 strong members of the Fiesta Association right now that are going into every category, music, stages, 200 vendors. These are all doing this without money, doing it for the public and raising money for kids. We gave out $20,000 last year because kids work for their money, and we not cleaned up the place, they did all kinds of things that helped earn that money for them. And so I think that if you cut out something like this, or you're cutting out something important to the community, especially in the money range. And so I.
Let me ask. Can I make? Madam Mayor? Oh, sorry.
Mr. Tremblay was first, and then.
I'll go on deck, it's baseball season. I'll go on, I'll be on deck. I'm strictly, you can go first.
All right. I won't throw you a curveball. And it probably, I would assume there'll be an emotion coming here, but perhaps.
Emotion?
Emotion, motion, yeah. A lot of emotion, and perhaps a motion. With the policy here, and I'm not suggesting we sit back for some more work, but would there be any interest in a current and/or city council member that sits on one of these boards, that if a financial question does come up, that they, he or she will be willing to recuse themselves from voting on it? Would that be something that?
For approval of the funds?
Right, that the council would like to consider in this policy. Now, I don't know if we need to send it back for more work or not, if we want to wordsmith this up here tonight, but perhaps that's something that we could consider.
Okay. Anything, let me work my way down. Anything else that you want to talk about? Okay?
I think that was the, with the financial issue, I think that was the one that, at this point, I have.
Funding, okay. Mrs. Craven, anything? Mr. Tremblay?
Madam Mayor, thank you. A couple of comments. Number one, as I said at the beginning, I'm not talking about this as a situation in which a legal conflict arises. As I said when I started my remarks, it's an appearance issue, and it's my, my own personal view in terms of trying to elevate the bar. I was not aware of contracts pending, et cetera. My reason in bringing this up is not to point at anyone specifically, including you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate having this respectful public conversation. I think it's a good, healthy thing to have this conversation. So with that said, what I was going to suggest is that if a member made a motion to adopt the policy as presented, I would simply go ahead and make an amendment to the motion. You can let it rise or fall, and we can go from there. I, you know, I think I can read kind of the handwriting on the wall a little bit, relative to what I've, are. to what I've articulated, and that's fine. But I, again, I appreciate having this conversation.
Well, I will tell you that perhaps, and I'm hearing it from Mr. Kildie, and I have no problem with it, if the, and I don't know if you're ready for a compromise, or if you're just going to do what you're gonna do, but I think a good compromise would be to stipulate that, you know, if a council member were to participate, and maybe we'd have to send this back to get the wording right, but that that council member would not vote on the funding. I think that's a reasonable thing. I think that goes to, Mr. Lormer was saying as well, while we always announce it publicly, what staff would have to do is pull it out of the budget, because these are line items in the budget, and it would have to be voted on separately, because right now, we vote on this $152 million, what was our budget? Am I right?
$141.
Twenty-one and a half. I just spent more money than I should've. And you're talking about...
You took in more.
Right, took in more, that's right. So, this huge amount of money, and you're talking about a very, very small piece of it. So, in the scope of voting on that, it's never been an issue, as long as you announced it. If indeed we need to pull it out and vote on it separately, I'm sure staff can manage to do that. I also personally, I don't have any problem if you want to, particularly if we got to the point of not having enough to vote, if you wanna limit it so that there's not undue influence, if there's only one member per organization, I don't have a problem with that one either, if that would help in the perception of not having too much control by the city council. But I also wanna remind you that we're talking about city events that we're funding, we're not talking about...
Just a few of them.
And just a few. Yeah, we're not talking about, you know, being able to spend this money for anything.
My thought, Madam Mayor, is that maybe the best course for council to do at this point is to, and this is a, you know, this is a brand, a new policy for presentation. I don't know that we're in a real hurry relative to anything specifically in terms of a timeline. My respectful suggestion is that perhaps this could go back to the committee, to the Policy Committee, for more consideration in light of the conversation this evening, and then come back to council at a later time, working through the issues that have been articulated this evening.
Madam Mayor, I do appreciate what the council member's saying, but in terms of timing, yes, we do have time constraints here. And so, if we were to take it back to the committee, I would anticipate getting it back to this council as soon as possible, because if we're going to be having an application process for applications that are due April 1st, we've gotta get those applications out there, 'cause, you know, these people are, they're gonna have to produce, you know, new material for an application process they haven't had to do before, and it's not gonna be easy. So, yeah, I would encourage the members of the Policy Committee that we would have to meet as early as next week, and pump this out and turn it right back around.
You know, the other thing we could do is, you can always revise a policy, so if we were to adopt the policy, then send it back to add, to look at, I don't, and I don't even know if the rest of the council wants to do that, but you could send it back to address these other issues, but at least you'd get your policy in place that starts that process.
Yeah, that would really be helpful to get the applications on the street, because these other matters really come up later.
I just need to kind of have an idea, do I sign those contracts for the summer concerts in the park?
Yeah, the same thing.
So, there is that, there is that timing issue.
I personally can't afford to pay for those. And we're all volunteers, so I doubt if I could pass the hat and get enough money.
Well, maybe, maybe what I would, what I would suggest is, given what the city manager has said, why don't we just move forward on a motion to adopt, someone, I assume, will make a motion to adopt this policy as presented, and there will be a second, and then I'll make a motion to amend it, to indicate what I did, and we can go up or down. And the city attorney can certainly advise us as to, it's the orderly process for doing that.
My suggestion would be, because then what you have is, you've made a motion, then you make a motion to amend, you know, then it becomes a little more complicated. Another choice would be, you make your motion, and it either, it either rises or falls with the lack of a sec. If there's no second, then there's, then it's not...
Why don't I, why don't I do that?
And we go by Rosenberg, we don't go by Rosenthal.
I know.
We don't go by Roberts.
We go by that, different rules of order, and I've been using another one my whole career.
Yeah, so they don't amend and all that stuff.
Okay, that's fine, then let me make a motion.
There is, there is one other choice, which is what I heard from the city manager, perhaps it was a combination of the discussion that was generated by the city manager's comment, but in terms of adopting the policy as it's written, and then a motion could be made to refer it back to the committee for potential amendments, consistent with the discussion that was presented by the council, and that could come back at a future date, but that's just another choice.
I would support what the city attorney has just said, just for the mechanics of being able to get these applications out on the street, and get our organizations working on them for an April 1st deadline.
Well, why don't you go ahead, Mr. Trimbley, and then make a motion?
I think the cleanest thing is just to make a motion. I may, I may, I may be, right, and then we deal with it, and then, and then on the body of the main motion. So, my motion would be as follows, to, for the council to adopt the guidelines for city supportive committee events as presented, with the additional language added to Section C-5, as I articulated earlier. Is that specific enough for a motion?
Yes.
You want me to read the, you want me to read the language again?
The city clerk is nodding yes, so she apparently has it down. Yes.
And does everybody understand what the additional language would be?
Yes.
Let me, let me read it again. The language of C-5 would say, "Camrio-based nonprofits..."
I'm sorry, thank, go ahead. You repeat it, Tom, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay, there would be a section added to Section C, which would be number five, and number five would state as follows, "Camrio-based nonprofit 501(c)(3) organizations in which a member of the City Council is a director or officer." That is my motion.
Do we have a second? That motion dies for a lack of a second.
Your Honor, I will move to approve this policy as presented in the packet. Do we have a second?
I have a second, Your Honor. I just have something kind of funny here. I thought this was your letter. It was from Mr. McVicker, saying almost the same thing you said.
It's not my letter, and I arrived at this, my views a long time ago.
And he very specifically said part of it wasn't his thing.
And I, and I, you know, I read, all due respect to Mr. Vicker, he sent us a long letter, and I, you know, that was the reason I answered, answered the question, what does nominal mean? So, and I think most of the other things in his letter were talked about, and if not, we'll take this under consideration if we look at it again.
I have a question. There's a motion and a second, but does that preclude somebody making a second motion after we vote on this?
No, we can vote on this one, and then, I'm assuming, we can vote on another.
The answer is yes.
So, we have a motion on the floor to approve the, the policy as presented. Please vote. And that passes for yes, with Mr. Trimbley voting no.
Your Honor, I will make a motion to refer this to the Policy Committee to look at changes in line with the discussion tonight, particularly about adding something so that a person who is a member of the Board of Directors or an officer in an organization that's being considered for funding would not be able to vote on that funding.
Would, I also, would the maker of the motion also like to direct staff to say no, no more than one current City Council member can serve on that board?
Let's take them one at a time.
Okay.
Okay, so we have, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, this is to refer it to Policy Committee with the purpose of adding a sentence or paragraph regarding being able to vote on funding for an event on which you serve on the Board of Directors as a director or an officer. Did I got it? Oh, I'm sorry, please vote.
You want us to raise our hands?
All those in favor. Okay, and that does pass unanimously. Mr. Kildie, you want one?
Yes, I'd also make a subsequent motion, that as it's referred to the policy, that there's consideration that no more than one current City Council member will serve on any of these organizations as a, what is it, a voting member and/or...
Board of Director.
As a Board of Directors.
Or executive.
Or executive.
So, one, but not two?
One, but not two, yes.
Mr. Trimbley? Oh, we have a motion, that was a motion. Do we have a second?
I didn't get a second.
Second.
Okay, then, motion and a second.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Cleo is voting for this. This is just to have a conversation in the Policy Committee, it's not necessarily endorsing what you are articulating, correct?
Exactly, until it comes back for full council discussion.
And then we get to do it all over again.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Please vote. Okay, whoops. Threw me for a loop on that one. That vote passes for yes, one no, that being Mrs. Craven. Okay, anything else?
Let's be done with this one for tonight.
Well, that was a healthy discussion, probably something that needed to occur. And now, Mr. Lormer, you don't have to talk about this anymore, you can talk about something else, so.
We get to come back.
We come back?